Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Matthew Mitchell. Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Joan De Zero.
Here.
Dane Hatch.
Paul Laird.
Here.
Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
And Lonnie Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson, would you please come forward and fill the vacant position today? Minutes of the last meeting, are there any additions, deletions, corrections for the minutes of the last meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair. Make a motion to approve minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz and a second by Ms. Zero to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Correspondence and announcements, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, I have no correspondence or announcements today. Thank you.
Interesting. Okay. Let me just start off by saying that this is a public hearing and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item and there will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that anyone of the public that wishes to speak, limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than three minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 23-3711. This is an approval of a, excuse me, approval of a conditional use permit for 201 Swanson Avenue, tract 2337A, block 3, lot 10, to allow four mobile food vendors, a permanent building, excuse me, and a shade structure in the limited commercial C1 district. Mr. Morris is presenting.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. Here's the area map. The subject property is located on Swanson Avenue, north of Smoke Tree Avenue, between Palace Way and Imperial Way. An alley abuts the rear of the property. The subject property and the properties to the north, east, and south are zoned limited commercial C1 district and developed with commercial uses. The property to the west, across the alley, is zoned multiple-family planned development and is developed with residential accessory storage units. Here's an aerial of the property. It's currently undeveloped, but it is paved and has three light poles and appears to be used for overflow parking for the area. It measures 100 feet wide by 150 feet deep, with a 95-foot front set aside as parking and common area, and the rear has a five-foot utility easement. This results in a 100-foot by 50-foot-deep buildable area. The proposed building, the shade structure, and the mobile food units are shown within that buildable area. The property owner also owns Rebel Barbecue Restaurant located on Akoma Boulevard, and he wishes to expand onto this location and provide spaces for four mobile food vendors. The site plan is shown here. The application proposes a food truck court at this property. It would include areas set aside for four food trucks, an approximately 200-square-foot fabric shade structure for an outdoor sitting and dining area, and approximately 720-square-foot building for restrooms, bar, and restaurant barbecue, excuse me, the Rebel Barbecue Restaurant. The 18-by-40-foot restroom-bar Rebel Barbecue Building is shown in the southeast portion of the lot. And then the 15-by-20-foot shade structure for the sitting dining area is also in the southern portion. Three of the mobile food units are shown on the northern area of the lot, in the buildable area, and there's another one on the south. There's at least 10-foot separation shown between all the structures and the mobile food units. The site plan also shows a wrought iron fence with two entrance gates and a swinging man gate between the parking area in the front and the buildable area. A similar fence is connecting the back of the property to the building and across the rear of the buildable area. There's also a trash enclosure shown in the southwest corner of the property, and five light posts are shown within the buildable area. The lot is part of a parking, approved parking and common master plan area. Therefore, the parking requirement is satisfied with paving and striping of the parking and common area of the property to match the existing parking pattern in the block. If it were not part of the parking and common plan, the development would require 15 parking spaces. The site plan submitted with the request shows 15 parking spaces are provided. There's actually room for two additional spaces. The site plan also shows landscaped area at the front of the property, between Swanson Avenue and the parking and common area. The proposed landscaping includes trees, shrubs, and decorative rock ground cover, meeting the development standards. They also, the applicant also provided 3D renderings of the proposed development. Here's a view on the top here from the parking area in the front, looking at the wrought iron gates with the wrought iron fence with the gates, and then the positions of the food trucks, and then the location of the building and the shade area. And then we have two, another view at the bottom here from the inside, and then finally two other views of the renderings of the proposed development. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have, and the applicant is also in the crowd. Thank you.
Questions of staff by Commissioners at this point, and I'm going to start with one. Mr. Morris, the already paved parking lot, can we discuss a little bit about why that's already paved, where it came from? Was this not one of the lots that was paved to accommodate the movie theaters across the street?
There was something in the history of the property that there's, it was provided as overflow parking, I believe, for the development across the street, be that the movies at Havasu and/or the what's now called the Foundry or the old Mud Sharks. So there was something, I think they were providing this as overflow parking for those developments. Of course, the existing parking and common for the other side of the street where the movies Havasu and the Mud Sharks is, that parking and common plan meets the required parking there. I think this was done as a bonus overflow, as I recall, overflow parking for courtesy for other patrons.
So the development across the street has sufficient parking. This was only done as a benefit for overflow parking? Something sticks in my mind, there was a lease for that parking or something way back when.
I believe there was something back in the late 90s, early aughts, that was something to do that, well before I was here. Doing some research on the property, I could find nothing specific that says this has to be provided for parking for across the street. If there was some sort of like a deed restriction that went along with this property, then it would be recorded and be.
And I may be off base, but that's kind of what I remember took place for that development across the way. And that would all go back to ownership and the lease and, you know, whatever the city required for parking for that development.
Correct. And the current parking and common schemes or layouts for this side of the street deals typically with the properties in this block, and on the other side of the street where the movies Havasu and the Mud Shark was, that parking and common deals with that side of the street. So I think, and I think this was going to be just overflow parking for just in case it was needed. It was an empty lot, and they apparently surfaced the entire lot.
Mr. Laird, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have some vague memory there as well.
I think we were on the Commission at the same time.
I think it had to do with Mud Shark's approval for its permit at the day, that it required, I think, the owner of Mud Shark to purchase or to have some agreement to develop that parcel to support their project. But as we know, the development code has changed over years, and I'm sure that requirement went away, but I think that there was a good point. Maybe there's some deed restriction there that may need to be cleaned up if it wasn't already a long time ago.
And if I may elaborate, any sort of deed restriction would be a private restriction for that property owner. It wouldn't necessarily, the city wouldn't have to hold to any sort of deed restriction. It would be up to the property owner to be aware of that and deal with that.
Might be worth looking into. Any other questions of staff by Commissioners? Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, I have a question. So the Foundry, which is sitting empty right now, the building's up for sale. If a restaurateur decides to buy that building and develop it into a restaurant, is it going to have enough parking if this, if this parking goes away? Based on what Mr. Laird just said.
Yeah, thank you for the question. The parking in that block is set aside as parking and common, so any development that goes in there, their parking is satisfied with that development of the parking and common. And the parking and common there is fully developed, so there's, it would be allowed to go in. If a restaurant were to go back in there, it would be allowed. There's no, the parking would be satisfied for the parking and common plan.
And then the other question I have is, are you saying, I thought I might have heard it in your presentation, but is Rebel Barbecue moving from their current building over to this? This is going to be their new permanent site?
I believe this is an expansion. I believe they want to expand into this property. The applicant may have more information about that, but my understanding is they're going to stay at their current location. This would be an additional location.
And then when food trucks come in and have, are there going to be permanent food truck sites there? Do they, I'm always concerned about, or questioned about versus a regular brick-and-mortar restaurant who has to pay certain fees and licensing and taxes, how does that, how is there fairness in that with food trucks?
Well, the mobile food vendors would have to go through all the requirements of the Health Department, city business licensing. They have also requirements called, they have to have a commissary where they take care of their vehicle, the cleaning, make sure it's taken care of, that sort of thing. Theoretically, they could have people, different vendors come in and out of this location. They have a total of four spaces, a maximum, so theoretically, they could rotate different food truck vendors in and out. So it'd be up to the food truck vendors and the property owner to make sure that they're meeting all the required health codes and business licensing and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Wilson. Excuse me, Mr. Stevenson.
Already confusing us, right? So the conditional use permit, what are the terms of the conditions?
Well, there are some conditions. Actually, I can go on a little further here. I think I have a little more information. I could go over that with you, though. Thank you for bringing that up. So as part of a conditional use permit, there are things that the city, the Planning Commission could add as conditions of approval, hence the name conditional use permit. So staff suggests, some suggested conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission could consider would be that the development shall substantially match the site plan submitted with the application, that the parking and common of the area lot be surfaced and striped to match the parking and common configuration of the adjoining lots, that no mobile food unit shall be placed on the property until a CFO, a certificate of occupancy, is issued for the restaurant-bar-restroom building, and the property is limited to four mobile food units located as shown on the site plan. And then find, and the mobile food units shall meet all appropriate city, county, and state requirements, including business licensing, fire, and Health Department regulations, and a minimum of one 15-gallon trash receptacle shall be provided within 15 feet of each individual food unit. And then all lighting shall be designed and shielded in compliance with Lake Havasu City Code standards, and the development shall comply with all the noise regulations described in the Lake Havasu City Chapter 9.3. And finally, the conditional use permit shall be reevaluated, reevaluated by the Planning Commission one year after the issuance of a CFO for the restaurant-bar-restroom building to gauge the impact of the use on the neighborhood and determine if any of the conditions needed modification or to assure minimum impact on the neighborhood. So those are discussion items we can talk about, and if you have other conditions you think might be appropriate, we can certainly talk about that and include them in a motion if you like. So hopefully that helps explain a little more. I apologize I didn't get to that sooner. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I haven't.
Ms. Zero.
Look, when, on looking at, if you can go back, I think it was number four, somewhere in there between four and five, would to address Mr. Diaz's concern, can we put something in there about, on any given time, a consecutive, a food truck can be there for a consecutive, like, three weeks or something, so it doesn't become a permanent vendor in that space where they just put it in there and it never leaves? Because it is kind of a concern that they, they get some breaks because they're not building the building and having to maintain those inspections.
Well, that's an interesting thought. Certainly you can add something like that. Then it would come down to how would that be enforced? We would have to track that somehow. It's, I understand where you're coming from, but the tracking of it would be, could be difficult to do.
Maybe we can hear from the applicant on their ideas for that.
In my mind, if it's, if it's set aside for mobile food units, each of them, it's, that's what's there. So if it's one food unit or a different one there, and in staff's mind, it's the, it's the use on that piece of property, each of the four mobile food units in each, one in each location, but, and they would have to, if there's requirements to, for their commissary, they may have to move anyway to take care of that sort of thing.
Any other questions of staff by Commissioners? Hearing none, is the applicant present? Would you like to come forward and make a presentation? Excuse me.
Hello, I'm Rudy from Rebel Barbecue.
Please state your full name for the record, please.
Rudolph V. Candido Jr.
Okay.
Had the longest name in the yearbook. So yes, the idea is to get the four trucks in there. Each truck, there will be extensive underground work being done, so each, each unit will have its own basically an RV hookup. It'll have the grease trap, will have a one-main grease trap, there'll be the gray water line, there'll be the freshwater line, there'll be power, so they're all going to be individually supplied. So the moving in and out, I don't think is going, going to be a problem. The whole idea is, I really would like to interview and get the food trucks that I want in there and pretty much go on a monthly contract where they're there all the time, so that when people get used to a certain new food item that they like and they want to go to, that they know they're going to be there all the time, the truck's not going to disappear and go do a show. What I, what I envision and what I don't want are trucks moving in and out all the time. I would rather have a set good food vendor that's there, there, contained where there shouldn't be any problem. I mean, I'll have somebody come in to do their propane once a week. We set up schedules like that. But these, these units should be, you know, they're obviously certified by the Health Department for inspections, and I'll be setting up my own personal inspection once a week, because obviously, these guys are a representation of me. So I will be having a pretty good grip on what they're producing, what their menus are, so I'll be regulating that pretty well. And we're going to make this look pretty nice. We have a really nice custom-made fence going in the background, a wrought iron fence in the front, the shade area. I think this is going to be a nice addition to that area.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? Ms. Zero.
Just, and as someone who has a brick-and-mortar restaurant here as well, there's no concern of yours regarding the vendors getting anything, you know, we just want to make sure it's a fair playing field, and so, looks like you're setting it up almost on a permanent basis for particular ones that coincide with your business. So you're not concerned as someone who owns a brick-and-mortar that this goes against it in any way?
I'm not sure if I understand your question, because I'm going to be the brick-and-mortar that's there.
Right.
Oh, and maybe to answer another question, I won't be doing any of the cooking down there. I am going to be keeping the Akoma property. That's where I'll be doing all the smoking, all the sides, and then we'll be carting everything down there probably twice a day.
Okay.
Probably more, but.
Thanks.
Mr. Stevenson?
So all the seating for this area is going to be outdoor seating? There's nothing inside your building as well?
Yes, we'll have the, we'll have the shade area, and then I'm sure we'll have some either picnic tables or round tables with the umbrellas outside of that.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, this is a public hearing, and I will now open it up to the public. If there's anyone that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con, now is the time to do it. Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the, this item and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of Land Use Action 23-3711 for a conditional use permit for 201 Swanson Avenue, tract 2331A, block 3, lot 10, to allow four mobile food vendors, a permanent building, and a shade structure in the limited commercial C1 district with the following conditions. The development shall substantially match the site plan submitted with this application. The parking and common area of the lot shall be serviced and striped to match the parking and common configuration of the abutting lots. No mobile food unit shall be placed on the property until a certificate of occupancy is issued for the restaurant-bar-restroom building. The property is limited to four mobile food vendors, units located as shown on the site plan. The mobile food units shall meet all appropriate city, county, and state requirements, including business licensing, fire, and Health Department regulations. A minimum of one 15-gallon trash receptacle shall be provided within 15 feet of each individual mobile food unit. All lighting shall be designed and shielded in compliance with Lake Havasu City Code Section The development shall comply with the noise regulations described in Lake Havasu City Chapter 9.30, and the conditional use permit shall be reevaluated by the Planning Commission one year after issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the restaurant-bar-restroom building to gauge the impact of the use on the neighborhood and determine if any of the conditions need modification to assure minimum impact on the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris. At this time, I would ask the applicant, are you good with these recommendations?
Yes.
All right, thank you. For the record, the answer was yes. Okay, we are now at the table for discussion and/or a motion by Commissioners. Anybody? Ms. Wilson?
So the applicant mentioned that each truck will have its own RV hookup and grease trap, and I mean, isn't that essentially an RV park that we're entering in here? I mean, it's a mobile vehicle with mobile hookups with that, in this space, and am I correct in that?
All the, the water and sewer will all have to go through the permitting process. It's a commercial property, so it'll go through the commercial review process. When I think of an RV park, I think of more of a residential, people living on the property. This will not, certainly no one will be living on this property. It's not zoned for that, and the uses aren't allowed for that. So we would see it as just more tie-in or tie-ins to the sewer system through their, imagine you had multiple bathrooms or something, or toilets on a property. It'd be similar to that.
Any other questions of staff by Commissioners? Mr. Diaz?
So I'm just trying to wrap my head around, so, and I'm looking at as an example, so you have like this taco restaurant that built behind the cigar bar, very small kitchen, basically the size of a food truck, but they built a permanent, you know, kitchen there, and so is there advantage for a food truck with the city's licensing fees and building permits? I mean, they're getting the same, you know what I'm saying? They're getting the same, they're getting the advantages of everything without having to build a permanent structure, and it basically is a hookup for an RV with a gray water and clear water, and it's not an RV park, but it's getting, you know, it's going to be there permanently, basically, and they get the, are we getting all the fees that a normal restaurant builder would have to get? Why not just build four separate little restaurants there? You know what I'm saying? That's the question.
My, my input would be, as I see it, they are doing a structure there, so there is going to be brick and mortar. May not be to the extent of a restaurant across the street. I think what we're here today to approve, other than the basics of making sure everything is per code, et cetera, is the concept. It's just a different concept for a restaurant. There's still going to be brick and mortar on the site, and, and, you know, the applicant's already testified that he plans on having these permanent, but it's just a little different concept of a restaurant. That's the way I see it. Okay. Any other, any other comments, discussion before a motion? We're at the table for a motion. Ms. Zero.
Okay. This will be a long one. I move to approve Land Use Action 233711 for a conditional use permit for 201 Swanson Avenue, tract 2337A, block 3, lot 10, to allow four mobile food vendors, a permanent building, and a shade structure in the limited commercial C1 district with the following conditions. One, the development shall substantially match the site plan submitted with this application. Two, the PIC area of the lot shall be surfaced and striped to match the PIC configuration of the abutting lots. Three, no mobile food unit shall be placed on the property until a certificate of occupancy is issued for the restaurant-bar-restroom building. Four, the property is limited to four mobile food units located as shown on the site plan. Five, the mobile food units shall match, shall meet all appropriate city, county, and state requirements, including business licensing, fire, and Health Department regulations. A minimum of one 15-gallon trash receptacle shall be provided within 15 feet of each individual mobile food unit. All lighting shall be designed and shielded in compliance with Lake Havasu Code Section 1404.5. The development shall comply with the noise regulations described in Lake Havasu Chapter 9.30. Nine, the conditional use permit shall be reevaluated by the Planning Commission one year after issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the restaurant-bar-restroom building to gauge the impact of the use on the neighborhood and determine if any of the conditions need modification to assure minimum impact to the neighborhood.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Zero and a second by Ms. Medley to approve Land Use Action 23-3711 with staff's recommendations. Not going to read it all. Any further discussion?
Jim.
Ms. Wilson?
I just think, or my, my concern is that we are opening up a can of worms throughout the city, that somebody can go and buy a mobile food vendor truck and save themselves a substantial cost on a bricks and mortar that goes through much more heavy regulation and cost, for sure, that, what's to say that somebody doesn't look at land throughout the town and just say, I can buy a food truck and do the same thing?
Thank you. Anybody else? We are at discussion. No further discussion, let's call for the motion.
Motion passes five to two.
Congratulations and good luck. All right, the next item on today's agenda is ID 23-3712. It's a request for a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for 115 Park Avenue, Assessor's Parcel Number 107-78-001, to change the future land use designation from resort-related to resort-related mainland. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. Here's the area map. The subject property is located on the east side of Park Avenue, north of Mulberry Avenue, near the Aquatic Center. Highway 95 abuts the rear of the property. The property is vacant, undeveloped, and it measures about 1.25 acres. There is a 50-foot utility easement at the rear. The utility easement will be addressed as part of the property's future development. The subject property and the properties to the east across Highway 95, as well as to the north and south, are zoned C1 limited commercial, and are a mix of vacant land and developed commercial lots. The properties to the west, across Park Avenue, are zoned island-body-beach with a condominium apartment project in the permitting process and a hotel under construction. Here's the current general plan map. All the surrounding lots on the west side of Highway 95 have a general plan, future land use designation of resort-related, and they're a mix of vacant offices, of vacant lots, office, hotel, and proposed multiple-family apartment use. The applicant's letter of intent asks to amend the city's general plan, future land use map, to facilitate development of a mixed-use commercial residential development on the property. The proposed development will include businesses and retail space on the ground floor with apartments above and a drive-through business on the same lot. The general plan land use map currently designates this property again as resort-related. That classification is appropriate for uses such as service and commercial. That classification is appropriate for uses such as service and commercial retail uses, including boat sales, rental and repair, hotels, motels, restaurants. It is also intended to serve and support the tourism-oriented resort industry. The requested resort-related mainland designation allows primary uses such as medium to high-density resort residential uses, including apartments. Secondary uses may include incidental services, commercial and retail uses. The areas for resort-related mainland are intended to serve and support the resort use developments that occur in the area of the Lake Havasu City on properties that do not have direct access to the shoreline, and the mixed-use developments should generally be, provide a commercial element of not less than 10%. So, the applicant is asking for the resort-related mainland designation because it allows for apartments, whereas the current designation does not. The requested designation is appropriate because it allows a mixed-use development with commercial uses of not less than 10% on property that does not have direct access to the shoreline. So, the general plan amendment is the first step in the process to develop this property. Plan development rezone for the property is the second step and will follow this, this item. At this point, the commission is asked to determine whether the requested general plan amendment is appropriate for the project. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's also in the audience, thank you.
Okay, questions of staff by commissioners? Anybody? Hearing none, is the applicant present? Should like to come forward and please, please state your name for the record.
Good morning Chairman Commissioners, my name is Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group, here representing the applicant and the owner today. They were unable to be here, so they asked us to be here to kind of speak on their behalf. We represented the owner in the purchase of this property, we have some history with this property, we used to own it and have been involved in a lot of the development on Park Avenue. So, here are more to answer questions today. We feel that this proposed action is in line with everything that's going on on Park Avenue right now, and we'll get into more details in the, in the next action on the zoning standpoint, but if there's anything I can answer related to this general plan change, I'd be happy to do so.
Any questions of the applicant? I have one that maybe is not pertinent, but, any idea as to what you, what the intended use might be for, after the zone change?
Retail, restaurant, I haven't identified exact restaurant and drive-through components, but there would be a restaurant component and some retail components to that ground floor.
Okay.
So, no, not exact user or...
I get that, I'm just, yes, trying to get a general feel.
Yeah, so, a combination of retail and restaurant use.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We are now open to the public, is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item? Pro or con? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning Commissioner and members. This appears to be a...
And your name, please.
I'm sorry, Kelly Lutz.
Last name?
Lutz, L-U-T-Z.
Thank you.
For the citizens of Lake Havasu City also. This seems to be a continuation of rezoning, um, commercial and industrial for residential use. This property was zoned commercial, uh, and it should remain commercial, that's what that area is for. We're taking away the possibility of, uh, future income tax-wise from commercial, uh, development, and we're for the short-term profit of a developer for selling, selling, uh, residential units. This property was commercial, it was bought as commercial, and the whole purpose of this was to turn it into residential in the future. That's their, um, that was their, the purpose, and it's in their stated, um, it's in their stated, uh, statement of what they're going to do with it. Uh, this whole thing has to do with 24 condo units, that's what this is about. So, we're changing this commercial area into a condo, and this will continue, as it has already, from that unit to the next unit, to the next unit, to the next unit, and this is going to be developed as, um, as residential condos. Uh, there needs to be, uh, a, a need to keep the commercial and industrial zoning, commercial and industrial. This is not a residential area, and that's what they're turning it into. They're even gonna, of course, they need to change the zoning on the height of it to get their two stories of residential on top of their commercial. So, this is a continuation of zoning change, zoning change, and zoning change to get what they want to do in there, including easements on utility easements they're going to have to change. So, this is not just one simple thing, and this, this is the first step in three or four different zoning changes that they're going to have to get to, to get their end result of changing commercial to residential. Yes, we as the citizens want to keep the future available for, for, um, uh, commercial property development that will bring, um, people into the city for that purpose, not for residential. They should buy residential property and develop residential property for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant? Or, excuse me, the speaker? Yeah, no, there's no questions, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Uh, Michael Gordon again, I just wanted to respond if I could to, to those comments. I, I want to be clear that what's being proposed here, first of all, the entire ground floor is retail restaurant component. What's being asked for in the exception is to add a residential component. It will not be a condo component that's sold, it'll be a rental product, or rental apartment-type product, smaller units for workforce and just a lower price point entry into the residential market. It, it's in, in essence, a mixed use, which is, there is a residential component going in across the street, and most of the other property is already developed. The property adjacent to the north is owned by Lake Havasu City. You have the Aquatic Center to the north of that. There is one vacant parcel immediately to the south, then you have the Keller Williams Office Building next to that, you have the Veterans Clinic that's under construction there, and then across the street you have a hotel component that's, uh, almost finished, and you have a condo and apartment mixed-use project going in right there. So, this area is pretty well-developed, and again, the intent here is to maintain that commercial retail use on the ground floor, but add a, uh, mix of uses by bringing in that residential component on top.
Any questions of the speaker?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Michael, the, the lot that's right below the, I can't see the number, 25, 125, is that, is that, um, zoned the way, um, we're going to be rezoning, did you request you to rezone this one?
No, so they're all, everything...
C1, yeah.
Everything's C1 right now, we're, we're going to be asking in the next action for a C1 PD, so it is staying C1, but with the plan development action would allow for, if it's approved, would allow for bringing in that residential component on top of the C1. Thank you.
Ms. Zero, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it was clear for, so you're looking at it as a mixed use, you'll put the, the restaurants or shops below, the apartments would be up above, and the intent of the apartments would be like B&amp;Bs. They're going to rent them out on short-term basis, or will people buy them for living in full time?
No, the intent is longer-term rentals, like for, you know, people that need a place to live, whether it's a snowbird or a, you know, schoolteacher or just, careful with the word workforce housing, but, you know, an apartment for rent, for rent product, not necessarily a short-term VRBO product, but a for-rent product for the marketplace.
Okay, so it's not looking at it as a permanent place to live for, in that area, it's going to be a kind of a, I'm temporarily going to be living here just on longer term than I would at a hotel?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I have a question with regard to parking.
Ms. Medley?
Yes.
Can you explain how you're going to address parking since you're going to have residential and you're going to have commercial?
Correct, so in the, when we get to the next action, you'll see a site plan, you'll see the proposed parking. It's a combination of the, the front, obviously, of the property where the retail access is, is the parking that meets code per the parking standards for the retail component. The apartment portion of it, there is some, and part of the reason for that, that two-story of, of apartment on top is so that there is some podium to that, so there's parking underneath a portion of the building and parking around the rear portions of the building for the apartment portion. So, you'll see the detail of that, um, in the design they have that's gone through not permitting review with staff, but obviously, all of that would have to meet parking standards and parking code for both the retail component as well as the residential component, and you will see the details on that in the next presentation.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
We are still in the public hearing portion, is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you very much. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for Land Use Action Number 23-3712, a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for 115 Park Avenue, APN 107-78-001, to change the future land use designation from resort-related to resort-related mainland. And as a reminder, this item will go to the City Council's May 9th, 2023 meeting with the commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, we are back at the table for discussion and/or a motion. I have a question for Mr. Morris. Is there a height change recommended in this?
This is, this item before you right now is for the general plan amendment, and so there's no exceptions or any exception, or height change or anything for the general plan amendment. Uh, the next item, which is the plan development, is the rezoning, is the, is the item that will have any exceptions they're asking for. Uh, they will ask for a couple of exceptions in the rezone portion of the plan development, but this is just the general plan. It establishes that, um, this land use designation that they're acting, asking for would allow the, the subsequent rezoning to take place because of the residential component that this general plan designation allows.
Strictly a land use action.
Correct.
All right, discussion and/or a motion, commissioners?
Chair?
Ms. Zero?
In looking at this, I think excellent points were made about being concerned about losing some commercial property, and it's a difficult one for us because we're trying to balance the fact that we also hear we don't have enough housing for the people that want to work here, live here, come in. We do have traveling nurses, we have traveling teachers that come in and need places. So, um, I do know that, um, in San Diego, they had a mixed use down by the Convention Center, and the place just blossomed because a lot of younger people like to live above the restaurants, the shops, and have a place that they can go to live, and then they, because a lot of them like to not have to take their car everywhere, and they can therefore just go downstairs and do their shopping and things. So, I do see some advantages to being able to start that process, um, being careful that we don't eat up all of our commercial property so that we don't have a chance for those businesses to grow as well. So, it's, it's kind of a mixed bag.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we're at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Anybody? Mr. Lair? Turn your microphone on there, please.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve this. Oh, I do have to read it. I move to recommend that the City Council approve Land Use Action Number 23-3712, a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for 115 Park Avenue, APN 107-78-001, to change the future land use designation from resort-related to resort-related mainland.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lair and a second by Ms. Zero to approve item number 23-3712 with staff's recommendations. I do think we need to, however, amend the motion because he referenced City Council instead of Planning Commission.
We can correct that as a scribe nurse error, or if you just want to make a quick, just correct that in a motion and have it reseconded, that'll correct the record.
Would you like to restate your motion?
You don't have to restate the whole thing, just say you're correcting your statement to, referring to the commission instead of the council, and then resecond it, and that'll, we'll fix it on the record.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would correct that to refer to Planning Commission instead of City Council.
Perfect. Okay, we have a motion on...
And then, I'm, I'm so sorry, and then second?
And the second, do you acknowledge also?
Second correction, basically.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion on the table, any further discussion by commissioners? Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, one question, is there, and this is probably for Mr. Gordon, is there, um, retail, retail, retailers already committed to, to fill in these, these, uh, commercial spots underneath that you're talking about? Or are we going to put release signs on it and hope someone comes and, sort of, opens businesses there? I'm just wondering, because I...
Probably not an appropriate question at this point because we're dealing with the land use action only and not what's going to be...
So, maybe the next item?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, let's call for the question.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, congratulations on that one. The next item on today's agenda concerning the same parcel is a, is ID 23-3713, a request for a plan development rezone for 115 Park Avenue, assessor's parcel number 107-78-001, from limited commercial C1 district to limited commercial plan development, C1 PD, allowing a maximum building height, uh, increase from 25 feet to 30 feet, and allowing multiple-family residential use. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you again. The subject property is located on the east side of Park Avenue, it's the property we just spoke about in the previous item. It's north of Mulberry Avenue, near the Aquatic Center. It's vacant, undeveloped, it's about 1.25 acres, and has a 50-foot utility easement near the rear. Uh, the subject property and the properties to the east across Highway 95 and to the north and south are zone C1, limited commercial, and are a mix of vacant land and developed commercial lots. The properties to the west across Park Avenue are zoned Body, Island Body Beach with a condominium apartment project in the permitting process and a hotel under construction. Here's the site plan, uh, the applicant's letter of intent and the general development plan describe two buildings on the property. One is about 2,600 square feet with a drive-through commercial, uh, building located near Park Avenue. The second is a mixed-use building with about, uh, 6,000 square feet of commercial uses on the ground floor and 24 apartment, uh, dwelling units on the floors above. There will be reserved parking for the apartments and businesses with the remaining lot used for the drive-through service. The lot will be landscaped and designed to meet city standards. The drive aisles for the drive-through service will be designed so they will not impede, uh, surrounding traffic patterns. This will include screening of headlights and providing double drivelanes to limit traffic overflow. The C1 zoning district allows building heights of up to 25 feet. The drive-through building will be well under 25-foot limit. However, the mixed-use building is proposed at 30 feet in height from the property's maximum grade. This is five feet higher than the 25 feet that's allowed in the C1 standard. Therefore, the applicant is asking for a height exception to allow the 30-foot tall mixed-use building. Uh, the mixed-use building will also be home to, again, to 24 multiple-family units, uh, two-bedroom apartments consisting of 12 units on each of the second and third stories. Multiple-family residential is not allowed in the C1 zoning district. Therefore, the applicant is asking for an exception to allow the use through this PD process. Uh, the building elevations indicate, again, a three-story building with varied parapet roof heights. Commercial uses and covered, uh, parking are on the ground floor and residential units on the second and third floors. Some of the residential units are shown with balconies. Uh, the building exterior is a mix of white, gray, and tan exterior with a number of alcoves and recesses to break up any long expanses. The multiple-family use will be similar in appearance to a hotel, which is allowed in the C1 zoning district. Staff does not anticipate the multiple-family use having a major impact for the neighborhood. As far as parking, parking for the project is shown on this table. The applicant is making use of the parking alternatives allowed in the development code to reduce the number of required parking spaces from 88 to 70 spaces. The shared parking allowance provides a 1.1 reduction factor for combined restaurant and residential uses, resulting in a reduction of six parking spaces. The bicycle facility reduction allows 12 bicycle park... The bicycle facility reduction allows 12 bicycle parking spaces in lieu of 12 vehicle parking spaces, resulting in a reduction of 12 more parking spaces. This results in 70 parking spaces required. The plan shows 75 spaces provided. The proposed number and types of parking spaces meet the development code standards. No parking exceptions are requested. A vehicle travel aisle is shown near the rear of the property. So this is the, the very east side of the site plan. So on that east side, there's a vehicle travel aisle showed. Unisource Electric has expressed concerns about the easternmost 25 feet of this 50-foot easement. And that's, that item, the, the 25-foot section that they're concerned with is shown out, highlighted in blue here. A vehicle travel aisle is located within that area. So Unisource is asking that this portion of the easement be left completely open with no concrete, asphalt, paving, irrigation, private utilities, retention trees, or shrubs, allowing only landscape gravel. However, per our development code, vehicle travel aisles are, are supposed to be improved with asphalt or concrete surfaces or an alternate paving material if approved by the zoning administrator. Pervious or semi-pervious paving may be allowed as appropriate alternatives if they are appropriate for the city's climate and durability required for their intended uses. The developer is proposing compacted decomposed granite as the paving material, that, which is not among the allowed options allowable by the zoning administrator. Therefore, a condition to allow compacted decomposed granite paving in this area is included for your consideration. Given the situation, staff is comfortable with the proposed parking alternative. The owner would prefer standard paving and is working with Unisource to explore potential options to still allow standard paving for that rear 25-foot. And you may also want to point out that rear 25-foot portion is within the area where the, the apartments will be and they'll be gated off. So the intent would be the rear area for the parking and the travel aisle would only be for the apartment owners or apartment renters. Landscaping and landscape areas are shown on this general development plan. A 10-foot landscape buffer is shown along Park Avenue right-of-way and landscaping strips are shown throughout the property. Review of the number of trees, shrubs, decorative rock ground cover, as well as overall percentage of landscaping shall be required prior to the development. No landscaping exceptions are requested. Some signage is also shown on the plan, but is not being reviewed as part of this application. All signage is subject to the development code and will be reviewed separately as sign permits are submitted. No sign exceptions are requested. Building permits, design review, and compliance with all other aspects of the building and development codes, including any off-street improvements such as curb, paving, gutter, and sidewalk, will be required prior to development of the property. The applicant also provided some 3D renderings, which are showing you here now. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have? And again, the applicant is in the audience. Thank you.
Okay, questions of staff from Commissioners? Anybody? Mr. Stevenson?
So let's start with the height. The, the proposal is go from 25 to 30, but on the elevation drawings, I see parapets at 35 feet.
Yes, thank you for the question. This gets back to the way the city measures building height. Height is measured from whatever the zero is determined to be for the lot. So in a case like this where the lot, street level is down and the lot slopes up from the street, that zero will be up the slope somewhere. And in this case, they will need it to be at least five feet up the slope because you go up five feet from the street and then that's where your zero is, then you go up 25 feet typically. They're asking to go up 30 feet from that point. So they go up 30 feet from that point, that gives them a 30-foot-tall building. But then what they're gonna do from that zero, they're gonna dig down five feet to get the other five feet, to get 30 above the zero and then five below that zero. Hopefully I'm explaining that well enough. So that would result in a building that is, measures 35 feet, but officially from zero mark, it's only 30 feet tall.
Does that answer your question?
So I guess to follow up, so the Keller Williams building, what is that? What is that at?
I don't recall. I think it's right at the 30-foot, oh, the 25-foot height limit. It's measured from the zero.
From the street?
Measured from the zero.
Or from the zero?
Yeah. And then, again, people are able to dig down to go taller. And you see that a lot, especially in residential areas with RV height garages. The height is 15 feet in most residential areas. And then to go taller than that, the property owners need to dig down and go below the, below the zero to get their height. And it's a similar, it's the same sort of application here.
What's the hotel height at?
Ms. Wilson?
I'm sorry.
The hotel zoning, the Island Body Beach allows up to 40 feet in height. And I think it's right there. It's pretty close to, it does not exceed it, but it's right there.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Lair?
Thanks. What would be the precedent? Is there any precedent besides this potentially for using decomposed granite or some other gravel surface for maneuvering?
No, there's not. The required travel aisles and things like that need to be paved. If it's not required, then it not, doesn't necessarily have to be paved. Also, things like display areas, vehicle display areas and things like that, we don't require those to be paved, but they need to be dust-free kind of a hardish surface. But we don't have any sort of example of this being used before. And that's, and again, it's not something that staff, as a zoning administrator, can approve. So we put it on as a potential condition or another allowance for the PD. Thank you.
Chair.
Ms. Zero.
Along that same line, just to make sure, I'm not a paving expert, so I'm trying to understand this, if they do the granite, is it loose like gravel? Or is it still a paved service but using a different material?
What we would have to do is through the development process, Unisource and the city departments would have to approve of whatever the material is, however it's compacted. So it'd be, it's something that's conceptual right now. We wouldn't, it would have to meet something that would meet the standards for, have to be approved by the Public Works Department, Building Department, and of course, Unisource to make sure to work for them. So I don't have a good answer for you. Don't know exactly what that would be, but it would be happening through the development process.
And is it just in that one area where the utilities are located?
Correct.
And the rest of it will be paved?
Correct.
And that's just so they can get to their utility lines?
Yes.
Easier?
Unisource was not in support of the hard surfacing, although the applicant is working, the owner's still working with them, see if there's some way they can still do it. Again, the owner would prefer the hard surfacing. The city engineering department would prefer the hard surfacing. It's Unisource and it's their easement, so it's, they have a say in this. So it's, it's their, they're the ones that, I'm not blaming them, but they're looking out for their, their lines.
Well, yeah, it makes sense. You don't want to have to dig through concrete every time you, you need to fix a line or something. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff by Commissioners? Mr. Stevenson?
So let's jump over to the drive-through component. How do we avoid a duplication of the mess at Starbucks and In-N-Out and this not tie up traffic entering into this complex?
Well, the project meets the queuing requirements for a drive-through per the development code. That being said, frankly, I, I think that that could be addressed in the future. We, for a drive-through item, drive-through properties like, or uses like this, we would typically want to have as part of the development process, something from the developer showing what their proposed, the traffic impact is for this above and beyond. And that is typically would come from the, the public works side of the development because they're concerned about obviously how this is going to impact the right-of-way. So despite what the development code, the zoning code may say it meets minimums, there's also the engineering, the public works department that would make sure, they want to make sure it meets their, what they're gonna consider not being a negative impact onto the right-of-way.
And just to follow up on that, at 2,600 square feet for that building, obviously it's not just a drive-through location, but there'll be, is, do we have a, a specific vendor designated to go in there? Is that inside seating as well? And then I guess the third part of that is, is if there's inside seating, customers are walking across three lanes of incoming traffic to access this building?
Those would be good questions for the applicant or the owner. At this point, the site plan does show a pedestrian pathway there to the, the property from some of the parking areas. It's shown here as a proposed building footprint of 2,600 square feet and all the parking calculations are based on that being a restaurant. So it could be a restaurant, sit-down, or it could be a restaurant, drive-through, or combination. But all the parking is based on being restaurant.
Any other questions of staff?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Luke, can you please explain the exception with the 12 bicycle stalls versus the additional parking spaces? What the allowed ability is of that?
Yes, I'll get to my slide here. All right. So our development code allows a parking reduction, a number of different types of parking reductions with specific, if it's meeting the specific requirements. In the case of the restaurant drive-through and retail, the commercial aspects of it, there are three, actually, let me start over. There are three different uses on the property, basically. There's a retail component, there's a restaurant component, and there's a residential component. So in, in allowing parking reductions, we would look at the two most onerous parking requirement types. In this case, it was the restaurant drive-through and the commercial, I mean, the residential components. So we would add those up and then provide a parking reduction factor. We divide it by 1.1 and that would then give them a reduction of six parking spaces for that parking reduction for the shared uses. As far as your question about bicycle parking, that's also in the code. They can do a one-for-one reduction up to maximum of, I believe it's 20 spaces. And you have to have at least 25 required parking spaces to take advantage of that. So through the bicycle parking reduction, they provide 12 bicycle spaces in lieu of providing 12 vehicle spaces. So with those reductions, it got them down to 70 parking spaces required. And they are showing 75 on the plan, so they're showing more than what are required, be it with the reductions. But the reductions are in the code, they're doing everything per the code, so they're taking advantage of that, making use of it.
That answer your question? Okay, any other questions of staff by Commissioners? Is the applicant present? Please come forward and straight state your name for the record.
Hello again, Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group. I just want to back up for a second and then I'll try and address some of the questions and comments from here and the previous item. First of all, just for a little history, this area on Park Avenue about, for a long time sat under one large planned development approval that had it all pretty well locked down in terms of retail buildings and the parking configuration and everything that was proposed to happen way back from the original MCO days. And during all that time period, because of how locked down it was, we saw no, no growth, no development whatsoever on Park Avenue. Five years ago or so, an action came through to remove that longstanding PD and free the property up more or less into C1 properties and Island Beach properties. Once that happened, you saw the properties start to sell, you saw the properties start to develop. The Keller Williams building was the first one to develop into a full retail, two-story retail building. Next, across the street, you saw the approval and construction on the hotel project. You saw then the VA clinic and then, and then the apartment condo project, the mixed-use project, and then now this is the next one in line. And I bring that up because at the time, again, most of that was locked down with just one, one PD, one consistent retail use. And what's happened by, by opening this up the way it has, back to the zoning code, is provided options for people to build what the market desires, if you will. And that's a mix of product, right? We're seeing everything from a medical use on the VA clinic side to a retail office building, to a hotel, to condo and apartment, to now something that is a combination of all of that. We're not losing the retail. The, the ground floor is proposed as full retail. We're adding that residential component. We're in essence creating that mixed-use product that's a combination of that. And to the concerns over dropping residential in the middle of it, I think if you look up and down the highway in this area and Swanson Avenue where the previous, the first action today was, you'll see that same thing. There, though, you'll see a residential block of condos, then you'll see restaurants, then you'll see another residential condo block, then you'll see everything's kind of chopped up with just either a standalone residential project or standalone commercial retail use. What's happened on Park Avenue, I think, is a lot more innovative and, and current with, you know, the park being there, the aquatic center being there, Body Beach being there. You have commercial, straight commercial across the street, you have residential straight across the street. But in this little block, you have a really nice mix of uses that are resort-related, retail-related, and residential-related, all working together, providing that opportunity for expansion of commercial and restaurant and retail that everybody wants to see for various reasons, including tax base, but also providing that residential component and that rental component. Couldn't be a better location, honestly, with the proximity and the walking distance to Rotary Park and Body Beach and the restaurants and the retail that we just talked about. So I just think it's important to keep that in mind as to how we've gotten to where we're at today and why we're talking about this project in the context that we're talking about it. That being said, when we did first, or when the owner first talked to staff about it, the other option was to come before you with the request to rezon to Island Body Beach because what you see across the street with the hotel and the mixed-use component of that with the residential and condo, this project very well could have probably fallen under the Island Body Beach zoning district as well. That would have allowed for a straight 40-foot height limit. I think between the height and between trying to stay consistent in a C1 fashion in some regard, staff kind of felt and directed ownership to stay within the C1 but go for a PD to ask for the things we're asking for today. So that leads us to where we're at in the request to, to stay within C1. The ground floor, like I mentioned before, really is C1 uses, straight retail and, and restaurant-type uses. To answer, there were a couple of questions over, are there exact tenants or exact ownership or uses proposed yet? There's not. I mean, honestly, until this goes through and even at that point, we're 18 months to two years from, you know, being able to move a tenant. And so I know ownership has some ideas, ownership's talked to some people, but, you know, there's nobody that has a lease locked down or anything in a concrete because we're just too far out at this point. But there's room there for some good options that will provide a mix of, of benefits to the area in terms of both retail and restaurant-type uses. So with that, the site plan you see is what's being proposed. It has that, that restaurant drive-through component on the front corner. It has the main mixed-use building, which has the three res, the three retail suites on the ground floor. It could be retail or resident, or, or any sort of retail, any sort of C1 use that could include other restaurant uses or could be retail uses on the ground floor. You have the parking behind that ground floor component of retail. There's some covered parking that's underneath the, the structure up above. And then you have the two, the two layers of, of the apartment residential project on top. When we talk about height, I think it's important to point out a couple of things that, yes, the, the renderings you do show, show up to 35 feet. If you, if you look at the elevation underneath that, the main plate height of this building's actually shown at 31 feet. The 35 is the maximum point of any parapet or extent, or, or projection that goes above the height of the building. Without getting into the weeds and Mr. Morris can add to this if he wants, but building code does allow certain projections, parapits, and other things to go above that, whether it's 25-foot or 30-foot of height. So yes, the current design is showing up to, you know, the highest point of anything being at 35 feet, but the main height of the structure at 31 feet. And on top of that, Mr. Morris did point out, there, there will be grading done to the site. The site will be lowered and it could very well be lowered even more. There's a substantial amount of elevation change that exists between the back property line and Park Avenue. So the building will get set down a little bit, which will effectively take the 31 feet to something under that and those highest projections from 35 feet to something under that. I think honestly, once, once the civils worked out and the, and the coordination with Unisource and the utilities in the back are worked out, we're gonna see that building sit down more than not and probably mitigate that concern of needing 30 feet. But at the end of the day, if we're forced to stay up at, at, at an elevation to work with Unisource and those other things, this is the worst-case scenario of needing that 30-foot height, so that additional five feet from a straight C1 zoning. But I also like to point out that even at the highest, the approved pad elevation for this site, it won't get built at that, it'll get built at something less than that, but even at that, we're sitting already below the highway and across- And across the street, we have two large structures that are going in that are 40 feet plus projections above that in height on the two Island Body Beach parcels. So yes, there's a request for a little additional height to accommodate this mixed use, but in scale with everything, with the aquatic center to the north, with the Island Body Beach, the hotel, and the condo apartment mixed-use project to the west, the highway being higher, the, the effect of that additional height's really pretty negligible in terms of, 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 in scale with everything else that's going on. It'll actually sit lower than the stuff on the other side of Park Avenue. And the view from the highway or from the other side of the highway where there's commercial buildings, you know, that little bit of negligible difference will be mitigated or offset by the impact of those buildings behind it. So at the end of the day, I don't, you know, I personally feel that the style of the building, one, the nature of the proposed uses in this building, in this zoning request change is consistent with everything that's happening on Park Avenue. I think it's a good fit, I think it's a good, a good future build-out to help support the growth in this portion of town, and would ask for your support in moving this forward to, to city council. With that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have on this. The one thing I did want to point out, the concern about the DG surface, if that is what's ultimately required, typically that's, it's not a loose gravel, it's a, like a quarter-inch minus, very well, like, compacted surface. So at the end of the day, you know, yeah, you have some loose gravel, like loose on, a little bit on the surface, but it's compacted pretty tight, kind of like the baseball, like the infield of a baseball field. It's that type of material, it's compacted, solid, so, you know, you're not going to have a lot of blowing dust, you're not going to have loose rock all over the place. There's a little bit of maintenance to it, but if it's maintained, it's a pretty solid, durable surface, if that's where it has to go. Like Mr. Morris said, ownership's okay if that's where it has to go, we would prefer to be able to work something out with Unisource to have a more permanent paved surface, at least over as much of it as possible. But until we get further along with development plans with the city, and, you know, we won't know for certain what, what we're able to do or not do there.
Okay, questions of the applicant, Mr. Stevenson?
So a couple of things, on the utility easement in the back, if you're talking about lowering the lots more, isn't that going to impact that easement to the back, because that'll lower your elevation on that back portion? So now that easement will have an elevation change from the adjacent properties, correct?
Correct, yeah, and there's a lot of moving pieces there, because there's elevation change from highway down to Park Avenue, there's elevation change from, like, the city parcel, I think it's about at the same elevation as this parcel, the city parcel to the north, but the, the parcel to the south is actually lower than this parcel. So there's great changes in all directions, and that's what I said before-
Mr. Morris, would you pull up the site plan again? Sorry.
Yeah, there's great changes in all directions, so there's going to be a lot of, of civil engineering work to do here to really make all of this fit and work right. And that's where I said, you know, at the worst case, it's going to be up at the approved pad elevation, which is consistent with about the middle of that, of that utility easement that's in the back. And there will be some grade changes happening, both, if the site's lowered, there'll be some grade change happening up against the city parcel, if the site's, you know, raised or whatever elevation, there'll be potentially some grade change with the, on the south side. And same thing across that easement in the back. I mean, you will have some sloping of drivelanes and different things to try and blend this in, and, and at the end of the day, that's, those are details that will get, that they'll get into more when they sit down with the civil engineering and really iron this out in terms of making it all tied together.
And just to follow up on the materials that we're talking about, have we seen it, that used anywhere here locally, or where, where did we get the idea for this?
It's a, I'm trying to think of where it's been used locally. Oh, yeah, the RV park at Campbell Cove has the drive surface through, a majority of that is a compacted DG decomposed granite material. You see it on some residential driveways and places, people use that in lieu of concrete or pavers. You see it in, like, I think even at ASU, some of their walkways cut through landscape are a compacted DG, DG surface in lieu of concrete. So yes, it's been used in places, we've used it on projects in places, it works well. It does have a little bit of maintenance, obviously, but, you know, it's not a loose gravel, and it does provide that flexibility to be able to more easily, you know, dig through it to access utilities and be able to repair it if that's what's needed.
Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, the DG is also in front of City Hall, all over, all over City Hall.
In the landscape, yeah.
Is ADEQ requiring any special water retention?
Yeah, this site will have to go through the standard Mojave County and city and DEQ stormwater requirements, just like all of the projects that have happened on Park Avenue, this project, as you see, you're not seeing any, any basins in here, so it will be underground stormwater retention is what will be used here to, to treat that and mitigate that.
No, I think it looks like a good, well-thought-out plan with the retail. I, I mean, I agree with Gagra, I'm always concerned about parking, but it looks like a well-thought-out with the mix of retail and, and residential, something that we, we use, could be not losing our commercial, we're going to be kind of doing a just mixed-use thing, but I just really hope we get some good retail and restaurant personnel in there, because the city can use it. I know you guys, you guys will do your best, thank you.
I think we will, and in the business that we're in, we've had a lot of interest in these properties for various, you know, restaurant components and specifically, and, you know, with the hotel and with the residential pieces and with the VA clinic, I mean, all those things are going to make this a high-traffic area that will become desirable, I think, for a mix of retail and commercial uses. So I, I do think it will happen once this building's there, just a little premature to, to fill it up at this point. One thing I did want to address is the parking, you know, we, we talk like it's an exception, we're, we're following, this design is following the code. The code's there for a reason. The, the options in the code for some bicycle parking and other things to offset are there for a reason, and that was adopted by planning and zoning in the city for a reason. Pretty much any project these days that comes through, especially in Lake Havasu City, where, you know, our, our parcels are small and, and people have to get creative, they're using the code the way it's written. So it's, in our eyes, it's not an exception, we're meeting the code as it's written.
Let's revisit the restaurant aspect. Without naming names, what type of facility do you see going in there? And maybe address the parking for-
I mean, I would just be speculating in terms of, I mean, we've seen a lot of, you know, things considered, not just for this site, but looking to position themselves in Lake Havasu City, so I'm not going to throw out any names, because-
I'm asking you too, but what type of facility? An eat-in facility?
More than likely-
Which would require parking?
Yeah, I mean, at 2,600 square feet, it, there's going to be a small component of, of indoor dining, I would assume, because it's a, it's a big footprint. That footprint of building would go down if it was just a simple, you know, drive-through coffee shop or something like that.
And that designated parking would be where on the plan?
It would be the parking-
Across the three lanes?
To, to the north, as well as some of the parking, you know, it, it's shared parking the way it would be set up, just like the rest of that area. So any of those spaces that are part of the public part of this project would be used for that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Anybody at all? Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Dinah Lutz, and I just want to comment, I feel in this city there's two tiers of code compliance. Big-money developers and me. When I built my home here, I had to comply with the rules. And guess what? We dug dirt and built retaining walls. So if he wants to go 35 feet, he can dig five feet and build walls just like us. It's just unfair, this is, this is a repeat thing. I sit in the city council and hear the things brought before this committee that you approve, and that's why my husband and I are here today. You're not representing the cities, you're representing these big developers with big money. And so there's people that talk, you know, about other things, about wanting to build, and we sit in the city council meetings and list these things, and we don't get the same consideration. So all I'm asking is if you approve this, he has to comply with the codes like the rest of us. As far as the focus on the city's housing, we, there, this obsession with providing affordable housing. What these projects he's proposing is making more service workers that are looking for jobs. We want this code commercial that, you would think the partnership for economic development, which the city pays, would bring in mid-grade jobs. Something more than just service workers, because what you created here is 24 units, which will probably the service workers on the first floor will want to live in. So you're not gaining anything by that. And finally, the parking, while he wants to say it's part of the code compliance, the, I'm not a parking expert, but that doesn't even make sense, and to suggest people are going to be riding bicycles? Do any of you ride bicycles around here to work? You've got an elderly population here, they, they don't ride bicycles. So I, I think, and that, by the way, is what failed in the city council on the 87-unit parking complex was the, the parking was a big deal. So my request is that if you approve it, they have to comply with the city code just like the rest of us do. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Either pro or con? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting, or this item, and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for land use action 23-3713 for a planned development rezone for 115 Park Avenue, APN 107-78-001, from limited commercial C1 district to limited commercial planned development C1 PD district, allowing a maximum building height increase from 25 feet to 30 feet, and allowing multiple-family residential use with the following conditions. One, the development shall substantially match the general development plan submitted with request. Two, the developer shall coordinate with the Public Works Department and Unisource Electric concerning development within the rear 50-foot public utility easement. Three, in, upon acceptance by the city Public Works Department and Unisource Electric, a compacted decomposed granite paving is allowed as an alternative vehicle travel aisle paving material within the easternmost 25 feet of the 50-foot public utility easement. And four, the developer shall coordinate with ADOT during the development permitting process to address impacts on drainage and the Highway 95 corridor. And a reminder, this item will go to the city council's May, May 9th meeting with this commission's recommendation. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Ms. Zero?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we recommend to the city council approval of land use number 23-3712, a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for 115 Park Avenue, APN 107-78-001, to change the future land use designation from resort-related to resort-related mainland.
We might be on the, that might be the, the motion from the previous?
Yes.
That's what's on my screen.
I'm sorry. All right, so we can, in your staff report, we'll give you a copy of it, right here.
That one? Okay, that's okay. So you want me just to read this one? Okay, we'll change the motion to, I move to recommend the city's council approval land use action number 23-3713 for a planned development rezone for 115 Park Avenue, APN 107-78-001, from limited commercial district to limited commercial planned development, allowing a maximum building height increase from 25 feet to 30 feet, and allowing multiple-family residential use with the following conditions. One, the development shall substantially match the general development plan submitted with the request. Two, the developer shall coordinate with the city Public Works Department and Unisource Electric concerning development within the rear 50-foot public utility easement. Three, upon acceptance by the city Public Works Department and Unisource Electric, compacted decomposed granite paving is allowed as an alternate vehicle travel aisle paving material within the easternmost 25 feet of the 50-foot public utility easement, and the developer shall coordinate with ADOT during the development permitting process to address impacts on drainage and the Highway 95 corridor.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Zero and a second by Mr. Diaz to approve land use action number 23-3713 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Commissioners? Hearing none, let's call for the question. All right, congratulations and good luck. Next item on today's agenda is the call to the public. This is the position, or the, the time at the meeting where anybody can address the commission on any subject whatsoever. We may not respond, but we will listen. Call to the public, anybody? Hearing none, I'll close the call to the public portion of the meeting, and future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you again. The next regular scheduled meeting is April 19th. We will be having a multiple-family parking discussion at the request of the, of the city council, so the next meeting, we'll be talking about multiple-family parking. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody, we stand adjourned.